Good evening, and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order, and we'll begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning requests, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the City 2015 Land Use Plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
I'll start by reading the consent agenda items. Item number one is approval of the May 7, 2008 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two was plats. Item three, rezoning from AG Agriculture District to the RS2, RA1, and RD Residential District and the RC Recreation Conservation District to develop property for residential uses at South Southeastern Avenue and E69 Street. Item four is rezoned from Subarea B Granite Valley Plan Development District to the RC Recreation Conservation District, future public open spaces at E67 Street North and North Seabird Avenue. Item five is rezoned from C4 Plan Commercial District to the RA1 Residential District to allow construction of apartments at West 18th Street and South Marion Road. Item six, rezoned from AG Agriculture District to the Village at Sycamore and 57th Plan Development District at Southeast Corner of 57th and Sycamore. Item seven, rezoned from Brooks Crossing Plan Development District and the C4 Plan Commercial District to the Brooks Crossing Plan Development District and C4 Plan Commercial District to revise subarea boundaries and incorporate additional property into the PD at the Northeast Corner of East 57th Street and South Sycamore Avenue. Item eight, major amendment in Subarea E of Meadows on the River Plan Development District to allow retail trade and service office and on sale alcohol use or as use is permitted at 2316 South Louise Avenue. Item nine is a conditional use permit for on sale alcohol as an accessory use at 4101 South Louise Avenue. Item 10 is a conditional use permit to bring two existing apartments into compliance with the zoning ordinance at 302 South Summit Avenue. Item 11 is a conditional use permit in the I-1 Light Industrial District to replace a non-conforming manufactured home with a new one at 3708 North 10th Avenue. Item 12 is a minor amendment in Subarea A of Windswept Timber Estates PD to allow accessory buildings larger than main residence at approximately one-half mile south of 85th Street along Western Avenue. Item 13 is a final development plan in Subarea A of the Marion Place Plan Development District to construct an office building at 4605 West Homefield Drive. Item 14 is a final development plan in Subarea A of the Scooter Plan Development District for construction of a multi-tenant commercial building at East 2nd Street and North Cliff Avenue. And item 15 is a preliminary subdivision plan for Heavenly Meadows 2 addition in the RS2, RA1, and RD Residential Districts and the RC Recreation Conservation District to develop residential uses at South Southeastern Avenue in E69 Street. Are there any objections from anyone in the audience to the consent agenda? If not, any planning commissioners want to move any of the consent agenda items?
Mr. Chair, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were looking for a motion.
I am now, yes.
I've moved for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
There's most in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, the consent agenda is approved. On the regular agenda, there's two changes. They are both deferrals, and they are going to be item 28 and item 33 having to do with the same issue. Item 28 is a conditional use permit in the C4 Plan Commercial District to install a new telecommunications facility at 4,000 West 49th Street. And item 33 is the design review in the 49th Street Design Review District for installation of a new telecommunications facility at 4,000 West 49th Street. Both 28 and 33 have been deferred until the next meeting. So with that, is there a motion to approve the revised regular agenda?
I move to approve the revised regular agenda.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, the revised regular agenda is approved. So our first item then on the regular agenda is item number 16. Staff report, please.
Good evening, planning staff. This is Jeffrey Schmidt. I'm re-representing planning staff on this item. This first item is a subdivision ordinance update. The last time we updated this was back in 1998. We've done some minor tweaks here and there, but this was a chance for us to, as it stated on the ordinance, we're going to rescind and adopt new. We've basically taken the 1988 version and taken it off the board and put in a new one. The significant changes are twofold. The first part of the subdivision ordinance really talks in regards to the process that we go through. The subdivision ordinance itself is how you subdivide land. It's your opportunity for developers, landowners, to sell land through plating or to develop their land through preliminary plans. And we will have preliminary plans on the agenda tonight. It's the opportunity for the public or Planning Commission to look at it, and it's really a very challenging aspect because we look at these things, we look at the screen, the public looks at them and goes, "That looks nice, there's streets and there's lots and blocks, but what does that mean?" The first step really in the subdivision ordinance is, what's the process? You go concept plan, preliminary plan, final plans, plat, construction. The second part are the standards. What standards do they have to comply to? What size of street? What grade does the lot need to be graded to? When we looked at updating this section, we've spent specifically, generally, two years updating this with the development community, consulting engineers, landowners to try to look at what we should change. It was decided that don't change the standards, don't look at changing that second part, leave that the same because that's really handled more in a day-to-day, annual aspect with the engineering office and the real construction industry trades. Change the first part of the subdivision. Look at updating the process. How do we go from a concept plan, a napkin sketch, so to speak, to how can I sell a piece of ground, the plat? And this is what I'm going to put up an overhead. This Table 1 is the most significant change that impacts anybody, and from that standpoint, in my opinion, I don't think it impacts people that much. What it states is preliminary subdivision plan submittal requirements. That section's always been there, and where you see on the left-hand side, if you want to push that up a little bit, Steve, there's always been the elements. For a preliminary plan, they always had to give, be submitted by licensed engineer. You always had to have concept plans, you always had to have the name of the subdivision ordinance. You always had to have those things required. However, sometimes items were deferred and they never came to Planning Commission, never came to city council because there was a disagreement between two parties and Planning Commission never got to see those items. Now, it's here in the ordinance that says, you know what, if an applicant gives us those elements on that left-hand side, for example, if they give us the proposed name of the subdivision, they get an opportunity to come to a public hearing. They give us the elements, they have a public hearing. Now, Planning Commission, when you get the preliminary plan, you get to look at, well, why do we look at the proposed name of the subdivision? The approval criteria is that the name shall not be duplicate or be the same in spelling or like in pronunciation with other names that are recorded. That's why. It's always been in the engineering design standards, it's always been an issue, but now we know that why are we looking at this? So again, in conclusion, the big change that's gone through this issue is the process. Now, if everybody gives us the things and the elements, they'll get their public hearing process, they'll be able to come before this body, and when they get here, they'll be able to say, "I'm meeting the criteria," and you'll be able to go, "Well, what are we judging this against?" They need to give us a vicinity map, and you can say, "Was the vicinity map within 660 feet and 1,320 feet? It spelled out in black and white. Nothing's really changed, we kind of put it in a nice little table, and so everybody understands what was required." And that was the update to the subdivision ordinance.
Okay, Jeff, before we get questions for you, I failed to read what item 16 is, so I'll read it into the minutes. Item 16 is an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rescinding the 1998 subdivision regulations of the City of Sioux Falls, Ordinance 18-98, and adopting the 2008 revised subdivision regulations of the City of Sioux Falls. And so, that's what it is. Is there questions for Jeff?
Jeff, could you explain to the audience here and we commissioners, the process, when you say this has been going on for two years? There's an organization, I believe, we refer to it as IRAB. This would not be here before us today without their approval? Would that be correct?
That's correct. There is an organization, it's a board, a city board, very similar to Planning Commission. IRAB is the Infrastructure Review Advisory Board. And so for two years, this ordinance has been going through the Infrastructure Reviews Advisory Board because, as Kenny mentioned, they've been reviewing, how do we do infrastructure? How do we review coordination of water lines, sewer lines? And they've been looking at this going, "Don't do the standards, just give us a set policy for how we do the process between planning and public works and coordinate that better." And we've had some challenges on what needs to be approved and what doesn't need to be approved and at what stage. And so after two years, we've been meeting basically every two weeks for two years on this item. We've come to an agreement, and we came, I think it was May 15th, they voted to approve this. Once it was approved at IRAB, it moves forward to Planning Commission. Planning Commission can make a recommendation to approve it to city council. City council will have two readings on it, a first reading and a second reading, and then basically by the end of July, this document may become complete.
Jeff, it's a fairly lengthy, it's a fairly lengthy... I'm searching for the word.
Document.
Document. I've been to quite a few of those IRAB meetings. On the vote that took place, can you remember, was the vote on this unanimous on the board that voted on passing this on?
On the board, yes, they did vote unanimous. They had deferred it the month before because there were still some issues to work out in regards to the access points and in regards to some of the drainage issues. But those things had got addressed by engineering, and again, not necessarily changed in the subdivision ordinance, but they weren't comfortable with how the engineering design standards were being addressed, so we wanted to make sure they were comfortable with approving the subdivision ordinance before it went forward, and then they approved it unanimously.
If we approve this tonight, this goes to the city council for a first reading. The second reading, if developers, engineers, contractors have issues with something that's within this, that's their opportunity to come to the city council and that whatever their disagreements might or might not be.
Absolutely, and at IRAB in the May meeting, I announced that we would be here in June at Planning Commission and July for the city council meetings. As well as, my intent is, for people that have had challenges with the subdivisions in the past, I was going to do emails to notify people to come out to the city council meeting in July so that they could be here. I thought maybe it would be better to deal with it for a city council instead of Planning Commission.
Staff's viewpoint is, is by changing this, it will make the process quicker?
More streamlined.
Cleaner?
I think this takes away a lot of the gray.
Thank you, Jeff, I appreciate that.
Any other questions for Jeff?
I just want to commend you because I know that this has been a very long and labor-intensive project on your behalf, Jeff. It is a far-reaching document that will impact so many, pretty much everybody in the industry. And though I think it's, all the things that you say it is, I just personally have not had enough time to look at it or to visit with anybody about it, just to be knowledgeable enough, so I can't support it tonight. I'm not voting against, I'm just going to have to abstain because I'm not knowledgeable enough on the document myself.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, thanks, Jeff. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item?
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if it's apropos, but I'm wondering if I could call Mr. Chuck Point up to the podium. Of all the IRAB meetings I've attended, Chuck has been to all the meetings. And Chuck can be somewhat outspoken, and a lot of these things were thoroughly discussed and talked about.
Thanks, Commissioner. I think you've summarized and asked Jeff all the great, best questions, and he's summarized for you. This has been a lot of work for a lot of people in our industry and the city staff, and I think Jeff and all the city staff should be commended because it's been painful to get where we are, but it's the best process that any of us could think of. So, thanks for thinking of me, and I just think that if we can always have a process like this to get somewhere, we're going to do well. It's not always going to be perfect, and somebody later is going to say, "Well, this is wrong," then we have to work on it again. But I think this is a, it's a good work product, and it's taken a lot of time and a lot of work and a lot of people's part to get there.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot, Chuck.
Thanks, Chuck. Anyone else care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item 16?
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion to approve the ordinance.
I second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
I know where Jesse's coming from. I think all of us ended up with the final product, I think, today. I think it was some 59 pages long. Can be viewed very technical in nature unless you're an engineer and/or a full-time developer. I did have an opportunity to go to the majority of the IRAB meetings, which consists of a lot of engineers, developers, and the meetings could sometimes be rambunctious as far as, "Why are we doing this? Why are we changing that?" Staff would always, if it was an issue, staff would go back, re-change it. Do I know it word for word? No, I couldn't, I couldn't say that, I'm not sure if anybody could, but I think I can feel comfortable, having been to those meetings, to support it. I know where Jesse's coming from, though, and I appreciate that.
Any other commission discussion? Okay, on item 16, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Item 16 is recommended for approval. Item 17, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the revised ordinances of the city by changing the definition of living ground cover. Staff report.
Good evening. Dave Loveland representing staff tonight on this and later items. Item 17 was brought before you primarily for the purposes of code enforcement. The current definition of living ground cover has been specifically delineated as either bluegrass or living red fescue. When grass gets to a certain length, it's a little bit harder to tell exactly what type it is, and for the purposes of specific code enforcement, the city and staff are asking for a change in the definition to simply turf grass after consultations with Parks and Rec Office on what that implies. And so, basically, the existing definition is too specific, and the new term will cover more species and is more readily enforced. So that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Dave?
Dave, I'm not sure that we had a problem. Give me an example as to why we need to get this specific. Are we saying some people, I won't pick on Chuck, but let's say there's a developer letting the weeds grow up and saying, "Hey, that's ground cover"?
Well, it's, you know, it relates to that somewhat, and it also relates to the fact that because of the specific definition of bluegrass or red fescue, any other type of grass that's planted is rendered non-conforming, even when the homeowner or the business owner is attempting to meet the intent of the ordinance.
Thank you, Dave.
Yep. Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item 17? If not, is there commission action?
I'll move for approval of this zoning amendment, ordinance amendment.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Item 17 is recommended for approval. Item 18 is a six-month review of conditional use permit in the C3 Central Business District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment, beer and wine bistro, at 420 East 8th Street. Staff report.
This review is six months after the subject property opened for business, and as a condition for approval by the Planning Commission in September of 2007, you had requested that the applicant come forward again at six months and one year for review of their conditional use permit to see if there has been any issues that arose because of it. The city, after talking with the city police and fire departments and the city zoning office, no complaints have arisen over those last six months, and we talked with downtown Sioux Falls as well, and they have not reported any concerns or complaints either. So, the applicant is present if you have any questions.
Any questions for Dave on item 18? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening, I'm Jerry Hulk. I'm the owner of Monks Pub at 420 6th Street.
Anything to add, Jerry?
I don't, no.
Okay. Any questions from the commission?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item 18? If not, is there commission action? We're looking for a motion to accept the report.
I'll move to accept the report on the conditional use permit.
I second.
So motion and a second. Any further commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. On item 18, we have accepted the report. Item 19 is a six-month review of the conditional use permit in the C3 Central Business District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment at 136 South Phillips Avenue. Staff report.
Again, this is the same process as the last one. This was a six-month review, the original approval was in September of 2007. And similar circumstances are that the city police and fire department, city zoning office, and downtown Sioux Falls as a whole have reported no concerns or comments that have been received regarding this applicant. The name of the business is Copper Lounge, and the applicant is here to address any questions that you may have for him.
Any questions for Dave?
Dave, I'm just sitting here thinking, why are we reviewing these applications?
Well, these come before you because there may be some comments that had been received during the commission meeting or before from the earlier application that was approved, and as a result of that, then either staff or the commission itself will ask for a review of that project, and so...
So in other words, the conditional use permit was originally granted with the stipulation that they'd been reviewed in six months and a year? Thank you.
Did you say that these two are reviewed then again at one year?
At one year, yes.
Okay, so we'll say it again. Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Hi, I'm Tim Cant. The address is 136 South Phillips Downtown. It's a new bar that we opened up down there in the front half of the building that we own down there.
Any questions for Tim? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item 19? If not, looking for commission action again to accept the report.
Make a motion to accept the report.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. The report is accepted on item 19. Item 20 is a future land use amendment allowing changes in future land uses to add and allocation of commercial future land uses at Southwest Corner of East 57th Street and Highway 11. Staff report, please.
The applicant has come before you to request future land use amendment as noted in the staff report. This parcel is 20.23 acres in size and is requested to be designated as a commercial land use. This specific application is for the corner of, right at the corner of 57th and Highway 11, which will include a future interchange when South Dakota 100 is constructed through that area. The proposed land use amendment centers commercial allocations of land use at the intersection, and it is, and staff considers that a natural land use at urban interchanges. Because surrounding land uses have not been defined at this point, we cannot comment on any sort of land use or conflicts that may arise. They're essentially the first ones there. So sanitary sewer is available along Highway 11. Water is not currently available at this site, but the developers are allowed to extend water mains to the subject property as long as they meet city engineering standards. We are recommending approval of this application. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you. Is the petitioner here, please?
Hello, I'm Clayton Jameson, 300 South Main. Any questions?
Clayton, I didn't want to leave you out. You've been at all the IRAB meetings also. I didn't see you sitting there. Could have got your response to...
Well, I would like to compliment the city department. They work very hard and very responsive, and the interreaction was, made it a lot better document for, well, I'm sure there'll be mistakes in it, but we can just change a few things here and there and go far.
Thank you, Clayton.
Any questions for Clayton? Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item 20? If not, is there commission action?
I move to approve the approval of the future land use amendment.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Item 20 is recommended for approval. Item 21 is a future land use amendment allowing changes in future land uses to add and allocation of mixed land uses at Southeast Corner of East 57th Street and Highway 11. and allocation of mixed use, mixed land uses at southeast corner of East Fifty-seventh Street and Highway eleven. Staff report.
Thank you. Again, this is similar, in a similar area, and the applicant is the same. The side, this is just a little bit to the south of this parcel, south and east, about just a little to the south of the actual intersection with Fifty-seventh Street along Highway eleven. The size of the parcel is fifty-five-point-one-seven acres, and staff believes that the designation of mixed use will allow there to be a transition district between the commercial along the north and then future, potential future residential to the south. So, again, the same types of things apply, sewer is available, but water will need to be extended to the site in conformance with city engineering standards, so we are recommending approval of this application as well. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Clayton Jameson, three-hundred South Main.
Any questions for Clayton?
Clayton, you're gonna be a busy fellow, how are you gonna get all this done?
Well, it's a lot better than our last, you know, few months ago.
Good job.
Anything else, any other questions? Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item twenty-one? Now is there commission action?
I'll move for approval of item twenty-one.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item twenty-one is recommended for approval. Item twenty-two is a future land use amendment allowing changes in future land uses to add and allocation of commercial land uses at the southeast corner of East Fifty-seventh Street and Highway eleven. Staff report.
Again, this is the same sort of circumstance as the previous two that you just approved. The applicant is the same, this commercial, this parcel is designated to the east of the actual intersection of Fifty-seventh Street and Highway eleven. This, the applicant is asking for commercial designation, and the size of the parcel is thirty-eight-point-eight acres. Same conditions apply, water, water is not available yet, but the applicant is able to extend water to the site, and sanitary sewer is available right now. So, we are recommending approval of this one as well. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Dave? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Clayton Jameson, three-hundred South Main.
Questions for Clayton?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item twenty-two? If not, is there commission action?
Motion to approve item twenty-two.
I second.
There's a motion and a second, any commission discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item twenty-two is recommended for approval. Item twenty-three is a future land use amendment to add an allocation of single-family residential, multifamily residential, and park and open space land uses at north of E-sixty-ninth Street and east of south, southeastern avenue. Staff report.
Good evening, my name is Steve Randall, I'll be representing staff on this item and others this evening. I know it's the glasses. Future land use amendment that's being proposed is to add an allocation of residential uses. There's no mixed use or commercial involved in this application, it's for an eighty-four acre site. It includes a concept plan for future development, along with explanations of how they fit into the growth pattern for the city of Sioux Falls, addressing all of the comments requested of them in the application form and as listed in your staff report. We are proposing this as being a transitional, suitable transitional use between non-residential uses in the future and lower-density residential. It is compatible with residential development planned and under development to the north, and we've had no calls on this, and that, we're recommending approval, and that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Cory Hanson, eight-twelve South Minnesota.
Any questions for Cory? Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item twenty-three? If not, is there commission action?
I'll move for approval of item twenty-three.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item twenty-three is recommended for approval. Item twenty-four is a rezone from the A.G. Agriculture District to the C-four Plan Commercial District to the C-two General Commercial District, and there's a change or a correction in the, in the item. It says to allow construction of a motel, it should say to allow construction of an allowed use at twelve-twenty through thirteen-twenty-one, E-sixty-third Street North. Staff report.
This report and the one before you, or the, the one to follow, were before you last month, this is a rezoning change at the southwest intersect, corner of the intersection of Cliff Avenue and Interstate ninety. Some of the concerns that arose last month, which resulted in this deferral, includes some, include drainage issues that some of the neighbors to the east had, have had some drainage problems in that area. Basically, your staff report is the same as it was last month, we have included some language to, to address some of the drainage concerns. Basically, and one of the other issues was that there had not been a neighborhood meeting conducted, and so that has been done, the applicant is here to address any questions that you may have. Basically, as far as the city's standpoint on the drainage issues at this time, is that in our standards, the city of Sioux Falls, its engineering division enforces a standard that stipulates no more water can leave the subject property post-development than did prior to development. This site is not tied into a regional BMP and will require onsite stormwater detention. So, we are still recommending approval of this application, and that concludes staff report.
Questions for Dave?
Are we hearing twenty-four and twenty-five together?
No, I'll address that again.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, when you say the site will require BMP, will that be a holding pond that will just naturally evaporate or always have water in it?
Well, that's up to them, they can do a dry well or a wet well, essentially, but that's up to them, that they will have to work that out with as far as their plans. Many places, you know, coordinate, coordinate keeping water in their system to enhance landscaping, but, or they can do a dry basin as well. It's, will be considered when they come forward for building permits and have to submit a stormwater detention report and plan to the city engineering department, and they will not be allowed to get a building permit until that's satisfactorily taken care of.
Thank you, David.
Mr. Chair, Dave, does the city of Sioux Falls differentiate between detention and retention?
Not to my knowledge, but that's probably a question for the city engineer's office. Unfortunately, I'm here right now.
So this is retention, where they keep it on site?
Right, yeah.
Other questions for Dave? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening, my name is Brenda Schmidt, and I was here a month ago, and I failed to have a neighborhood meeting. I did that, and I hope I included all of them and gave notice to them. We had a meeting the following week, that Wednesday, and there's concerns were drainage and if the road would be, remain open or not, and to my understanding, the road will remain open, and I also expressed to them that we would be working with Sayre and Associates on the drainage and retaining that water and that the city would require that. I also followed up with a letter this last week and asked them to call me if they had any other questions. I think there may be some, some neighbors in the, in the audience that may have some questions yet, but that's what we did.
How many people were at your meeting?
You know, I have, I would say there were probably around twelve to fifteen people there. When I collected the addresses, there were six homeowners, I believe, that I meant letters to and a reel to, so.
Questions for Brenda?
Brenda, was it a good meeting? Do you feel that they put some of their concerns to rest as far as this site adding
to what already is happening? They were positive about the development, and naturally, my being a homeowner, that would be a concern of mine too, if they're in a low-lying area and worry about the drainage. So, again, I assured them, we build hotels and we would always go by the governing, governing laws and regulations, so that, what the city requires, we will do, so I hope they're at ease.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item twenty-four? If not, is there commission action?
I'll make a motion to approve item number twenty-four. I second.
There's a motion and a second, any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item twenty-four is recommended for approval. Item twenty-five is a rezone in the A.G. Agriculture District to the C-two Commercial District to construct, and the change here is an allowed use instead of a motel at thirteen-ten and fourteen-oh-one, East Sixty-third Street North. Staff report.
Again, this is the same property with the same applicant. We have the same issues, and I, and I'll clarify the question from the one before, whether the city differentiates between retention or detention, and yes, we do, but it is still up to the applicant to determine which one they would like to do, so. Otherwise, we have no, no further comments on this one than we did last time.
Any questions for Dave on item twenty-five? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Brenda Schmidt, again, I'm here to represent the owners, which is Bob Noah.
Any questions for Brenda on item twenty-five? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion to approve item number twenty-five, the rezone.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item twenty-five is recommended for approval. Item twenty-six is a major amendment to subarea A of the Fifty-seventh Street West Plan Development District to allow hotel, motel, motor court, motor lodge, or tourist court uses and to revise subarea regulations for parking setback, landscaping, and design review requirements at fifty-three-hundred South Grand Circle. Staff report.
The applicant is proposing to amend the subarea regulations for the purpose of constructing a hotel and accessory uses on the subject property, and in your staff report, I've outlined in subarea A the sections which would be affected by the request. In section one, under uses permitted, we would like to add hotel, motor, motor, motel, motor court, motor lodge, or tourist court to be allowed on this property. Under accessory uses, add on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment as an accessory use on the subject property and a banquet meeting room as an accessory use on the subject property. In section six, under other regulations, they would like to include the verbiage that all developments shall be in conformance with Interstate two-twenty-nine Design Review District standards except for Lot Four, Block Five, Rolling Hills subdivision, which is the subject property. The applicant is head companies and representing both the applicant and the owner of the property. It's a three-point-two acre site, and it's currently vacant. It's in an area that is under development in this planned development district and is adjacent to a subarea which does allow office and residential uses, but is also a property that allows for expansion of commercial uses, except that hotel was not previously allowed that type of use. The applicant is requesting that it be allowed to enhance the identity of Sioux Falls as a place of unique heritage, culture, and setting in which all residents can take pride. They've provided concept plans that indicate the architectural character, landscaping, and nature of development, the capacity of development. It's located on the south side of Ideal Yardware Store in a vacant lot on the west side of South Louise Avenue at the south end of South Grand Circle. Access is from South Grand Circle as part of the controlled access to this particular commercial subdivision. It does have steep terrain, and it does affect the development capacity of the property as indicated on the plan. The applicant is going to come to you again here later in the agenda for a minor amendment to reduce some constraints on that particular development. The plan is complete, the final development plan application will be required in the future for approval of the plan, according to the minor amendment and also this, this major amendment that would allow the use. Because the application is a quality development at this location, and the final development plan is required for application in the future, staff is recommending approval of the major amendment which will allow the use. We've had one call, and that was from Ideal Yardware, concerned about the nature of development on the property. We offered to show them the development in our planning office, but also recommended that they contact head companies directly, and the applicant is here this evening and can respond to that question. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Steve?
Steve, when it says all development shall be in conformance with the Interstate two-twenty-nine Design Review District standards except for this particular lot, is that unusual?
Yes, it is.
Staff feels that the design, landscaping, and that offsets removing it from the review district standards?
This is, staff feels that this is an unusual location and does have physical properties to the development of the site that affect how it can be developed reasonably, and so because of the location which is affected by site lanes, the interstate is higher than the subject property, and it's actually not the main driving lanes of the interstate, it's a, it's an off, or it's, excuse me, it's an on-ramp to the interstate, so traffic going by the property is headed away from the property rather than coming towards the property, and so the design review standards take on less meaning as far as affecting the public view of the property, which most of the design standards do affect, the view of the property, in terms of screening, setback, landscaping, and so on.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other questions? Thank you, Steve. Is the applicant here, please?
Paul Hague, thirteen-hundred West Fifty-seventh Street. I just want to say that I did meet with Cory Hanson with Ideal Yardware yesterday and showed him the plans and talked to him about what we were doing, and he seemed to be in favor of everything we were doing, so. And then, if you have anything else?
Terry Panizak, I'm chair of development for head companies.
Anything else to add on this one? Any questions?
Mr. Chair, Terry and Paul, I like the plan for the simple reason that the best view is really backed up to the interstate or the on-ramp, and the parking, which typically becomes an ocean of cars, much like the neighbor to the east, the Honda dealership, in your case will be broken up into some smaller areas. With the landscaping, I think it, it'll be a nice addition to that intersection, so thank you.
Any questions? Any questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item 26? If not, is there commission action?
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion to approve the major amendment.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Item 26 is recommended for approval. Item 27 is a conditional use permit for on-sale alcohol as a primary use for a sports bar and grill with video lottery at West 18th Street and South Marion Road. Staff report.
The applicant is proposing here to construct a new building for a sports bar and grill with video lottery, outdoor patio seating area, and accessory onsite parking. The location is indicated on the screen is directly in front or to the west of another item on this agenda, which was previously approved as a consent item, which would allow residential development next to the subject property. The applicants here are Thomas Thompson, Pinball Incorporated, and the owner is Todd Olson, representing Olson Oil Company. Size of the property is a 1.4 acre site and it's currently vacant. Conditional use standards are still in effect, although we did change those and those will be in effect probably the next time you hear on-sale alcohol establishment accessory uses to restaurants, or as affecting on-sale primary uses. But for this particular case, we have the three requirements concerning the concentration of use, the effect on adjacent properties, and whether or not children would be present and be affected by the location. Staff finds that all three conditions are not affected by this particular application as far as concentration, effect on adjacent property, and children's uses in the vicinity. However, the outdoor patio area is a concern that we have for its location next to future residential development, which the backyard should be up against this patio. So, at the time of this report, the developers of the adjacent residential property did not express any concern about it. Staff is bringing it up in case there is some concern expressed at tonight's meeting. And we are recommending that that area be properly screened from the residential uses. And are recommending approval because it is an allowed use in this commercial district with conditions. The first one, that a final plat be required prior to building permit issuance. The second one, that the trash enclosure wall be similar to the building masonry material. Three, that screening be provided of parking and outdoor patio from adjacent residential uses. And four, that public sidewalk be provided. It is a residential neighborhood. We've had no calls on this, and that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve?
Steve, did I hear you say that this particular lot is zoned for this, or the whole parcel of ground is zoned?
The whole parcel is zoned. It's not, is not platted as yet for this particular use.
But they're, but they are going to change part of this usage to residential?
That's correct. Previously, they also have to go through a replating process in order to establish that use.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Steve. Is the applicant here? I don't see an applicant. Is there commission action to defer?
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion, in the absence of a petitioner, to defer this for 30 days.
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion and a second to defer item 27 for 30 days. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Item 27 is deferred until next meeting. Item 28 is a conditional use permit in the C4 Planned Commercial District to install new telecommunications facility at 4,000 West 49th Street, and that one has been deferred by the applicant. So, our next item then will be item 29, a conditional use permit in the RD Residential District to allow an in-home daycare at 1413 West 7th Street. Staff report, please.
Thank you. The applicant is coming before you to, and is proposing to allow a family daycare in a residential district. This location is one block north of Axel Park Middle School. The, to do a conditional use permit for a daycare, there's three categories of daycare. One is under six children, one is between six and 12, and a commercial daycare is over 12 children. The applicant is and is licensed to hold a daycare, a family daycare, which is between six and 12 children. She does have her license, her certification. On the backside of, or on the last page of the report, under supplemental information, I indicated that the applicant is currently registered with the Health Department, is in good standing. The applicant has applied and received defense permit from the Building Services. Hadn't been received yet at the time of the drafting of this report, and it is in hand now. And we have received, as of this afternoon, the requested information that, including site plan and the statement that no more than 12 children will be allowed at one time. So, we are, given that the city's Health Department is, has licensed this daycare and has found, and has no comments, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit. And the condition that we had listed on there, provide a site plan detailing the location of the fence play areas and parking areas, has been provided. And so, it's up, we can remove that or leave it on, but either way, it's been provided, so.
Okay. Any questions for Dave? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
My name is Patty Rinkman. I live at 1415 West 7th Street. I have a daycare.
Yep. Any questions from the commission?
Go ahead.
Okay, I guess we have no questions. Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item 29?
Hi, Jeanette Westra. I live at 205 North Hawthorne. There's just some concerns in the neighborhood about this daycare. I do have some pictures of the outside of their house. I've been appointed by a few of our neighbors. We went around this afternoon and got quite a few people to sign this petition, saying we do not want this daycare in our neighborhood. There's been some problems with the fencing area. There's been problems with kids. There's been problem running out the street, running out onto 6th Street, which is very, very busy. There's been problems with traffic. There's cars in and out of there all the time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There's, people don't care where they park when they drop their kids off. They park half a block from the curb, or they park sticking out of the driveway, come around the corner, practically running into people coming in and out of there all the I know there's, now, I, just getting some information from my other neighbors today, there's been a concern that there has been more than, between 12 and 18 kids there, between 2:00 and 5:00 in the afternoon. Between, that's 18 kids for one person, that's a lot of kids. She can't keep track of all these kids. She's got kids running out to 6th Street. She's got kids running out on 7th Street. Very busy, busy corner to be having a daycare. Another concern that we had, there's no backyard. All the toys are out front. There, it is a mess. There's toys everywhere. The fencing that she had up there was a snow fence, which I see that that's down now, which that was a big concern for the neighbors, just looked trashy. That's down, that helps. Few other things, there's sex vendors, registered sex vendors in our neighborhood. That's gotta be a concern. There's been many times I've drove by the house and the kids are outside and there's no adult. There's nobody there watching them. And they're little kids. They gotta be four, four or five years old. They shouldn't be left out in the yard by themselves. I've had to honk my horn to get them out of the street. No adult. So, those are a few of the concerns that we have from the neighbors. I do have a bunch of signatures here.
Steve, can you, the pictures and maybe the letter, get that put up, please?
Oh, one other thing. The neighbor that lives to the west of this house has been trying to sell their house for some time. The main concern of people looking at their house, which they've told the realtor, is they come around the corner and they see this house is just, there's toys strung everywhere. This is actually a good day. This is actually better than what it has been. She's been there a year and there's been no attempt to put a fence up. I understand the fencing thing got taken care of tonight, it sounds like, but it's, it's ridiculous. So, the house that faces that side of the house right there is having a problem selling their house because it's just, people see that and they don't want to live in the neighborhood.
And where do you live in relationship to?
I live south, right, see where the backside of the house, or the side of the house is, I live just up the street that way, about four houses.
So, is this a side yard that we're seeing here with?
Yes.
About how many feet between the house and that fence?
15, 20 maybe? Yeah, same, yeah. There's no backyard. That fence that you see right there behind the, behind the house, to the south, that's the neighbor's fence. So, there's no backyard. She's got 15 to 20 feet there for kids to play in. And it's a half a fence. That fence doesn't go all the way around, that stops right there at the end of that block.
Can we up that?
Hang on, just a minute. We can come back up in just a second.
So, that's the, those are a few of the neighbors that, myself and a couple of my other neighbors went around the neighborhood today and asked everybody about, do you want this daycare open in our neighborhood or not? And those few that signed that said absolutely not. It's a, it's a risk. It's all these kids running around is their main concern. It's unsafe.
And you're representing the?
Few of the neighbors, yes.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, Janet, I?
Jeanette.
Jeanette, we appreciate the input. And I think it's important, though, to remind you that our charge is to deal with land use issues. We rely on the state and the city to license daycares for most of the things that you're discussing with us tonight. I just wanted to bring that up so that everybody understood that while we don't tend to ignore those things, that our real charge as a commission is to deal with land use.
Okay, so that land use is gonna be for a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week daycare, is that what?
No, there are some, some things that the state and the city have that relate to those issues too, but supervision probably isn't part of what we deal with. As an example.
Well, you know, I'm voicing my concern for all our neighbors. We saw the note on the fence, and this is where we want to come to be heard. So, if there's something else we have to do, then we'll do it.
Any other questions for Jeanette?
Have you expressed any of your concern to the state agency that governs daycares?
Actually, I have to the city a couple of times. I've called them. Nothing's being done, so.
To city zoning or to?
The main concern was the fencing, that they had the snow fence, and that got taken down, so that got taken care of. But there, then, without saying it loud, her being here, I mean, I have to be neighbors with her, but just a few of the neighbors that have called. Few agencies, I don't know.
I echo what Meredith says, though. There is another place, you know, for that dialogue. If you have concerns as a neighborhood, you know, you should certainly.
Absolutely.
Put that forth.
And I will ask some of the neighbors if they've made that choice to call there.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Jeff Schmitt, Planning Staff. I just wanted to help facilitate the discussion with Planning Commission before you called the applicant up to ask some of these questions, I'm sure you have. Meredith is correct, as well as Anita, this is a conditional use. And currently, the planning staff has one condition on here. As a conditional use, the reason that it is a conditional use is that you're able to put conditions on this application to limit the impacts on the property and the adjacent properties. Just like with a restaurant, a car wash, a retail establishment, you're able to try to mitigate the impacts that they have by putting conditions on a conditional use.
So, things like hours of operation, that sort of thing?
Yep. She's talked about the concerns about fencing. If fencing wasn't, or at this point, it says provide a site plan detailing the fence, doesn't say that there needs to be a fence.
So, if we could ask for a date of installation?
Correct. You know, because the zoning office is going to look at this and go, this is, this is what you conditioned, that they had to give us a site plan. What are your conditions to mitigate the impacts that this, as well as, yes, we have to go to the Health Department, all those other things, but the site plan, the land use that we're talking about are conditional uses.
Jeff, Jeff, Jeff.
I was done, Kenny. I was.
No, no, no. And that's got a question.
Well, I just want to clarify why this is coming before us now, if it's been operating for a year. What is it in the?
Certainly.
Condition that's changed?
Because the applicants are willing to come to us, are able to come to us when they see fit. We have a lot of operations in the city of Sioux Falls, not just daycares, but other establishments, home occupations, and auto repair. I mean, we have a lot of establishments that operate, and when they're willing and able to come to us, they come to us. They have to be registered with the Health Department. They do not need to be registered with the Planning Department.
Jeff, if there were conditions to put on a conditional use permit, who would be responsible for the enforcement of that?
The zoning office.
So, in other words, if, say there was a hours of operation from 8:00 until 5:00?
Correct.
And it was going into the evening, the neighborhood would have an opportunity to contact the zoning office. Zoning office would investigate it and deal with it.
That's correct. You know, and again, you have to, to address this like you would anything else, where you say, you know, 8:00 to 5:00, and consider that, you know, are people really gonna get their 5:00, or is it better to do, just like a restaurant, what are the hours of a restaurant, what are the hours of daycare, what are the appropriate hours for these types of things? And I think you understand that. But it's easier for zoning to enforce it when it says, this is how you determine it versus, well, we think they should open in the morning and close at night, and zoning's gonna look at that and go, we have no idea what Planning Commission meant by those types of things.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Was, did you wanna, okay, why don't you come up here and then I think we'll get the applicant up then.
My name is Beatrice Taylor. I live at 213 North Hawthorne, and I'm like right across the street and one house up. Now, I'm gonna sell my house in about two years because my son's gonna be going to the service. And with this, even if she puts up a chain-link fence, if this is strung from one end of the yard to the other, and people come around the corner, my property value's gonna go down. I don't think I'm gonna get a good price. I mean, the neighbor next to me, he's been trying to sell for a year. He finally took his for-sale sign down because people come by and they see that and it looks nasty. I mean, I wouldn't, if it was me and I was moving into that neighborhood, I saw that, I wouldn't move there. And I've driven by, you know, it's just, it doesn't look good. And I'm afraid my property values are going down. I didn't invest in a house and do upkeep on it to have some neighbors, you know, pull me down. So, that's what I'm concerned about.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you. If you'd come back up here, Pat, please? Would you like to address any of the issues that will open up for questions if?
Well, for one thing, I don't have that many kids. We have parents come and pick up all day long, all the time. I run two shifts. I run usually about 6:00 in the morning, occasionally a little bit earlier if somebody's got a meeting at work, or, usually it's about 6:00, 6:30. I close normally, on the average, about 2:00 morning. I usually sometimes have an helper, sometimes don't.
Did you say 2:00 in the morning, 2:00 AM?
Yes, yes. I have John, people that work for John Morel's, and people that work for Swift, and they have to work those hours, you know? They got a family. and they have to work those hours, you know? They have a family to provide for. So, and there's many other daycares in the city of Sioux Falls that do, I mean, I can get the list from 211. Anybody can. You guys can. They can find out all the cities and daycare in Sioux Falls that do two shifts at their home. The city and state are okay with it. I don't know, I've never, I haven't had my problems with it. So anyways, beyond the fencing, I would never put chain link up. The chain link of it is up there right now is coming down. It is disgusting. I bought the house in August. I haven't even been there a year yet. When I moved in there, there was weeds down near as tall as me. The house was in foreclosure. I mean, it's taken a lot. I had to put drain tile in the inside and the outside. I mean, it's not like I've been sitting on my butt doing nothing. I run a twenty, almost a 24-hour daycare and working on my house. The basement, I bought the house for one reason. I believe in taking care of my property. And I grew up on the farm. I'm not, no lazy person that's not going to be proud of my property. The whole basement is going to be daycare. My house has four bathrooms, seven bedrooms, two living areas, and two kitchens. That house is well big enough to handle all my 12 kids. And there's only 12 of us, right? So I don't know, there's pictures, I'm sure you guys have all seen them. I don't know. And there's a vinyl fence going up. I don't have the exact date.
When do you anticipate that, Patty? It'd be a month? It'd be-
I'm hoping for a month. I wanted it done last year.
Okay.
The city, one of the neighbors complained about the snow fence being up. That was a temporary fence. The city okayed it. I went to them the last year and I asked if I could put that up. They said yes. Somebody complained this summer when it started getting nice out and I was getting ready to put the, the other fence up, and they made me take that one down. I got a hundred dollar fine. If I didn't have it down by five o'clock that day, I got a two hundred dollar fine. So I ripped it down. Now my kids go outside and play and occasionally we go to the park. My kids do not run across the street. They are not allowed to. I have announced to some boy that happens to like my neighbor across the street, and he likes him a lot. He wants to go see him. Well, he's not home half the time. So I mean, and he loves to be outside. So 98% of the time, he doesn't run across the street. But I'm right there catching. But we do have neighborhood kids who play out in the street all day long, every day of the week, all nights, all days. They play out there. My kids don't. None of my daycare kids play in the street. I wouldn't allow it. The city wouldn't allow it. The state wouldn't allow it. But their parents allow them to. I don't think it's right. I don't think it's right for them to show my daycare kids that they can play in the street that that's right. Here I am teaching, and their parents are hopefully teaching them not to play in the street. I mean, that would be logic to me, but.
Do you think it's in, do you think you're able to, to get a little bit more definitive about this fence? Because I see it as sort of a major fix to a lot of the concerns that are being discussed.
I am. Fences are very expensive.
Is it on order?
It is not. I have bids, and obviously I have, I've went down to the city planning office. I have a permit.
So if we were to put a stipulation in your approval tonight about the erection of a fence, we would describe it kind of based on what you're telling us?
It's a model and it's going to be see-through. I cannot, I live on a corner lot. I mean, I've been down at the planning office probably an hour and 45 minutes one day, trying to figure out which fence was going to be best for my property.
So you're not going to have a problem if we add that stipulation to your-
No, I'm having to find, I'm not going to have a piece of crap fence on it. I have planned on probably never selling my property because I'll do rental property if I ever get out of daycare, like it was before I bought it. But I am not big on trashing my house. As much as I hate to say this, my brother came down to see me and he says, why did you buy neighborhood, why did you buy in this neighborhood? He didn't like my neighborhood. Not because of where it was. I mean, he, he thought you could have done so much better somewhere else. But I wanted the house. I wanted the size of the house. No, it doesn't got a backyard, but it's got a side yard. And I've planned on fencing in front of my garage. I have tons of trikes and bikes and stuff for my kids to play with. I can't have my own children. So these are my babies. And for someone to try and take that away, that's sad.
So Patty, if you think we, if, if we say mid-July or the first of July-
It'll be done by July.
Okay.
I mean, I could see a lot of other, and I, when I come back, I'll, I'll probably come back just for kids and giggles, to show you some of the pictures of my neighborhood. That, that house that's on the corner, her house, the chicks of the house deal, that they took the sign up, that house was for sale before I ever bought my house. It is a nice house, but they won a lot of money. I looked at it. I know.
All right. Is there any other questions for Patty?
Just a quick one. Patty, did I hear you say that you're basically running a daycare there 24 hours a day?
Almost. Not quite 24. And it's not seven days a week. I don't take kids on Saturdays and Sundays. Occasionally, I'll take one on Saturday, Saturday morning. But the last two months, we haven't been home. I took little boy I had this last year, I took him out horseback riding this Saturday. So how many cars were parked at my house on Saturday? I believe my truck wasn't even parked.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, Patty. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll close the public testimony on item 29 and look for commission action.
I'll move for approval of item 29 with a slight rewrite to the first stipulation in addition to providing a site plan detailing location of the fence and play area to have a target date of having it installed by August 1st, with approval by the planning staff of its layout and location.
Okay, installed by, you said, August 1st?
August 1st.
And approval by the planning staff?
For the layout material and location of the fence. I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion?
I, I, I'm not going to support it. And, and I'm sitting here thinking to myself, I understand there's a need for daycare. I understand that, that, that there's a mechanism in place for people to take care of children in their homes. We are talking about a residential neighborhood. We're talking about a daycare that's running, basically, it sounds like 24 hours a day. I'm not sure that a residential neighborhood is a correct place to have that type of a daycare. If this was a daycare that was running from eight to five, I, I, I don't think I, I'd support it, knowing that there's a need for that. I can kind of feel where the neighbors are coming from here. We all live in a residential neighborhood. I'm not sure a 24-hour daycare is the right place for this particular daycare.
Ken, I have to agree with you. 24-hour daycare in a residential neighborhood-
On a residential-
-doesn't seem right. And I could support a six to six, knowing that kids, people have to get to work and any time when they get off of work to get their children picked up. But I'm not sure I would want a daycare that somebody at 10 o'clock at night or midnight is coming, you know, traffic back and forth in front of my house either.
I would agree with that as well.
Any other discussion? Okay, we-
I'm sorry, did somebody say something?
You know, Ken, I, I understand what you're saying about the hours of operation. And I, I certainly think that if you want to consider, you know, writing an additional stipulation into this that would, you know, narrow that scope a little bit, would be something that we should talk about and entertain. I heard most of the issues, you know, relative to kind of the fencing and the look and the kids being safe. And I, I think that she's right. If we look out into the community, there's certainly a lot of extended hour, home-based daycare operations that are in place. And in the comments from the neighbors, I didn't hear anything about that hour piece being the concern. It was more about the number of, or the perception of the number of kids and these safety issues relative to the, to the fencing. I, for one, really struggle with limiting what I know is a, a really challenging piece for working families to cover in terms of those off-shift hours. So that's what I would like to say about that. I, I mean, I, if you want to take it from 2:00 AM to midnight or some, you know, reasonable it up a little bit. But I do know that that, that need exists. And if she does everything in her power to mitigate all the safety issues and all of that, I'd be open to it.
I think with the fence installed, a lot of the, if not all the issues go away, certainly in the back burner.
I would agree with both what Ken, you're saying.
If I wanted to make a motion to set a limit to the hours, how would I go about that, Ken? Or do we have to deal with, I guess I'd like-
You have to make a substitute motion. And if there's a second, we'll vote on that. And then we'll vote on the motion that is, that made and seconded already.
I mean, not to say no and shut up and absolutely close the daycare center, I would make a motion to-
Kenny, I really think that before we do that, though, we need to consider another option, which would be to defer this issue and see if we can let this work out. I mean, this woman came to us voluntarily to try to come into compliance with something. We may be very well doing something that totally changes her business and the people that she's trying to serve. And I think that would be somewhat unfair of us to strike that strike right now. I would suggest that if we're not, if, if we need some more information on this, we defer and we let some of this work its way through with the neighbors and Patty, and let them come back to us.
We have a motion and a second for approval.
So is there a way that we can put on there that we want to review it in three months? Because then the fence will be up, or that would be June, July?
That's, you can do that. It's the same type of thing as with an alcohol license. You can ask for a six-month review, one-year review if you so choose. So you can put that on as a condition.
And that would be done through a substitute motion that we would vote on. If there's a motion second, and then vote on the original motion as well.
Yep.
So I, I'm not sure that's going to change my thing. I don't think it's fair for these folks to live in a neighborhood that has a 24-hour daycare. I think if you want that type of operation, there's other places for it. Something with an office zoning. And I realize that's more upscale and maybe more than this particular partition if you knew. But that's just my feelings on it. Anita?
Other discussion?
Call the, call the question.
I'm sorry?
Call the question.
Okay. Item 29 with the change in the condition to add that the fence would be installed by August 1st and it would be approved by planning staff. So all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign?
Aye.
The item 29 is approved with the one condition. Item 30, conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow a motor vehicle repair shop at 4060 South Grange Avenue. Staff report.
The applicant's proposing to use an existing property building and accessory parking lots and change the use to a motor vehicle repair business. It was Swatlosky Tile Company in the past. It's a commercial zoning district and the proposed motor vehicle repair business is allowed by conditional use. Paul Reynolds is the applicant. It's almost a two-acre site, and we have the vacant building and site improvements to look at. Under the conditional use standards, it's noted that motor vehicle repair shops shall establish an adequate number of parking spots to store the cars and shall provide appropriate areas for the storage of parts and other materials which shall be screened from view. We do have another application on the same agenda, which deals with the design review district for I-229 because of that condition of being screened from view. The applicant is proposing to meet all landscaping requirements for front yard for screening and for the I-229 design review district. And also to screen parking from view to I-229. Because the application makes reasonable use of the vacated commercial properties and otherwise conforms to the requirements of the district, staff is recommending approval with two conditions. One, that a revised site plan indicates the storage area is screened by means of an opaque wood fence, masonry wall, or landscape berms, subject to approval by the planning director. And that's pretty much the wording that the design review district requires. The site plan that's provided by the applicant indicates a wood fence on top of existing retaining walls. However, the height of the fence and the design and the nature of the wood fence was not described, and it was enclosed on only two sides and not three. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit, and we did not receive any other calls concerning the application. One other comment, 49th Street is supposed to run through behind the subject property between the proposed use and that nursing home to the north. So that condition with residential development on the other side of an arterial street does not affect the landscaping at all. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Paul Reynolds, 6809 South Minnesota Avenue. Here tonight on behalf of the Vern ID Motor Cars for their new proposed auto body facility that they'd like to relocate down there. The current facility that they're in, they've been in for, I believe, 25-plus years, and they're actually just looking at updating their facilities. And they also have some other opportunities that they're going to be working on in this general area down there, and they would like to focus their business down in this, this area. Questions?
Questions for Paul? Paul, there was some discussion. Now, when we're talking car repair, we're talking day-in, day-out type stuff. Are you talking body repair?
This is, this is their auto body repair facility. And the comment that Mr. Randall was referring to is as far as the screening, vehicles are going to come in, they're going to be damaged. It's going to take a while for the repairs to take place. And with the existing loading docks that are there at the building right now, that's the area that they would like to screen in and potentially have those vehicles be dropped in that vicinity.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Paul, I think it's a great place for Vern ID to move to. I, you have commercial all around you and it'd be nice to see that building have business in it again.
Yes, it would.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else care to comment on item 30? If not, is there commission action?
I've moved for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item 30 is approved. Item 31 is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District for the installation of a telecommunications facility at 1740 South Cliff Avenue. Staff report.
Here, the applicant is proposing to lease property on an existing, existing commercial parking lot and install a 60-foot-high telecommunications tower with concealed antennas and underground cable connections to an equipment room in the corner of an existing building. It's a conditional use here because of the stealth design requirement. We believe that the applicant is meeting the intent of that requirement by providing the concealed antennas, underground connections, and a stealth monopole. As far as screening is required, there really isn't any requirement because the base of the tower is the only exposed portion. And the height of the tower, we believe, is screened from the residential neighborhood at the northeast corner of the property by a substantial tree vegetation that is existing on adjacent property. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit, and we've had no calls.
Questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. My name is Kurt Walter, Rochester, Minnesota. I represent Verizon Wireless. I'm basically here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Kurt? It's not easy on you. Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item 31? If not, call for commission action.
Motion for approval on item 31?
I second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item 31 is approved. Item 32 is a minor amendment to Subarea A of the 57th Street West Plan Development District to reduce front yard setback requirements from 15 feet to zero- District to reduce front yard setback requirements from 15 feet to 0 feet on South Grand Circle and from 15 feet to 10 feet on South Louise Avenue to reduce onsite parking requirement from 232 spaces to 188 spaces and increase the maximum building height allowed from 45 feet to 50 feet, 2 and 1/2 inches at 5,300 South Grandview Circle. Staff report.
The major amendment to allow this use was previously approved. Now, the applicant is requesting some minor amendments to allow the development to proceed as presented. The applicant basically is proposing connected buildings on the property as indicated in the plan with parking areas away from I-229. Consequently, it's the building itself that has to deal with the difficult terrain. On the one hand, parking lots typically don't work too well on sloping sites. On the other hand, buildings can accommodate the change in grade just through its foundation work and changes in levels. So the design is appropriate for the site, but the requirements for setbacks, building height, and landscaping are affected. As we look into the required setbacks, the reduced required setback on South Grand Circle is a front yard setback that accommodates entrance movements and turning circulations for traffic going to the front door of the hotel. Basically, it gets into the front yard, which is not allowed. However, at the end of the cul-de-sac, there are no other properties that are affected by those setback conditions. That is adjacent properties which would line up or be expected to line up with those same requirements. As far as the setback on Louise Avenue is concerned, it is not for building, it is for parking and they are indicating substantial landscaping to mitigate that five-foot reduction in setback to 10 feet. We consider Louise Avenue to be an area where we would like to respect additional design measures to make it an entrance into the community and that primarily has to do with the landscaping. There are other businesses along Louise Avenue who have reduced their setbacks. The bank on the corner, Midwest Bank, had to reduce their setbacks in order to accommodate their plan. These folks are asking for the same. Ideal Yardware, the one in between, I think, and then what, the McDonald's, did meet those setback requirements. So we have two to two as far as that goes on precedence. Reducing the onsite parking requirements, I'm going to let the applicant address that, but they are requesting a reduction from 232 required spaces to 188 spaces. And then they're asking for an increase in building height allowed from 45 feet to 50 foot, 2 and 1/2 inches, just because of the nature of their construction. Again, the visual impact of the additional heights of the building should not have any great impact. Again, the traffic is going away from the site. It's on a sloping site, steep terrain, and it should not have a visual impact at all. The landscaping plan, they are proposing to meet the minimum requirements of the landscaping plan. And the signage that they proposed, staff was not able to calculate the required amount or the maximum amount of signage that would be allowed on the property because the set, the block frontage and the building dimensions were not indicated on the plan. So perhaps the applicant could address that as well. Overall, the building design is compatible with adjacent commercial development. It seems to be well done and does make a good fit to the difficult property, both in shape of property and on the terrain. Again, we did not have any other property, neighboring property owners call the office with any questions and because the plan will be required for final development review by this body in the future, staff is recommending approval of the minor amendment. As far as the number of rooms that would give you the basic calculation for required parking, the applicant will also address that. And that concludes staff report.
Steve, what is the ratio? How many stalls are?
It's one per room plus five.
One per room plus five, okay.
Steve, the street coming into that will be known as Grand or is known as Grand Avenue?
South Grand Circle.
Will that, will that street allow parking on it?
It does. Right now it's. It's, it's standard width on a, on a collector's street. It's not the reduced 50-foot, it's the full 66-foot.
Any other questions for Steve?
Steve, do we know what's on the west yet?
Pardon?
What's going to be on the west side of that?
Don't know. It's in a different subarea of that planned development district which allows either office or residential uses. To the north and to the west, there is multifamily residential uses developed now by Van Barth Buskers, I believe.
Any other questions? Thanks, Steve. The applicant here, please?
Hello again. Terry Ben Isaac for Hake Companies.
Terry, how many rooms?
It's 103 rooms.
103 rooms and you have how many?
Parking requirement for the hotel itself would have been 108.
And you're requesting how many spaces?
188.
I'm sorry?
188.
So you do meet the parking requirement?
No, we don't. It's, we also have an auxiliary use, which is the banquet facility, which has its own parking requirement in addition to.
Okay.
And that's where the reduction comes in. Basically, it's a select service hotel primarily for business travelers. So we anticipate during the week, a lot of the functions will be business functions in the, in the meeting rooms. So there'll be overlap with the hotel in that respect. And then on weekends, when you see mostly social functions, occupancy in the hotel is reduced. And on top of that, there's also redundancy in terms of the demand because a certain amount of rooms are associated with the functions that are in the, the meeting space. So that's how we get the reduction done.
Okay. Thank you.
How is the calculation for the meeting rooms?
It's 10 per thousand on the gross, excuse, no, 10 per thou, 10 spaces per thousand square feet on gross square foot. And the meeting room space in this plan is shown as about, I think it's 12,400 feet. So that's where the requirement came from.
So that's where you came up with 120 or whatever?
Exactly.
Other questions?
Terry, you're not concerned that parking could get tight here or?
Oh, I definitely are. But we, from experience, know that there's a certain amount, obviously, there's never, or generally not 100% occupancy in the hotel, so the parking is never fully utilized in that respect. And then the overlap between the two with the fact that a lot of the, or a number of rooms will be associated with events that are at the meeting facility. So there's no duplicate parking there. And then you always have your number, a lot of times in the hospitality, not everybody arrives by car. Being a select service business-type hotel, we have people that just come either via taxi or by our shuttle from the airport. So it's a direct.
My mind kind of thinks of a wedding reception or something like that.
And those are primarily on, on weekends where the business travelers are, and the occupancy in the hotel is somewhat depressed, so.
Terry, what is the use of that space then? If you reduce the parking, what will you be using that space for?
I'm sorry?
What are you using that space for? If you reduce the parking, what are you using that additional space for? Is that to make the building fit?
It's a combination of everything, the landscaping, the building, the layout of the property. Because there, as Steve said, it is a challenging piece of property. It's got a lot of slope to it. So it's going to be, we're going through engineering, design phase now and we're trying to accommodate a lot of that slope.
I'm, I'm just wondering, I guess, if someone said no to the reduction in the spaces, is that going to throw off the plan? Is this an all or nothing situation?
Yes, well, not, not all or nothing. We'd have to look at the spacing and see what we can do.
And how many employees? I'm assuming you have, hotel employees will be a certain amount and then if you have a function?
It varies from shift to shift. Say what, Paul? How many? Forty or, well, I, I think he's looking for at one, at one time.
Yeah, like how many cars are going to be there from employees?
Probably, yeah, it depends on the function space, but 10, probably 10 to 12, something like that.
Paul, hey, 1300 West 57. You're going to have probably, if you have a full function going on, which is usually going to be in the evening timeframe, you're going to probably have two to three people in the hotel, but you probably have, what, six to seven in the, or eight in the banquet facility. In the mornings, you're going to have a few more people in the hotel because of housekeeping staff and front desk. But in the afternoons, the housekeeping people are gone and you're just left with front staff, front, front desk staff. And then whenever there's an event, it's based upon the number of people is how you staff it.
Paul, did you have similar challenges with parking at your previous location by the mall? Or did you have, I know you had the mall overflow parking, but did you have enough parking on that just yourselves for, to meet these requirements?
You know, I wasn't involved enough to really give you a very good answer. I never heard anything to the contrary that we were ever pushing the parking limit. And so I don't, I can't ask the question.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, Paul, you guys do this and I guess I sit here and I go, there's a concern in my mind if you've got enough parking, but obviously you've addressed that or you feel comfortable that this is going to work with you. Aren't motels in that 80, 90% vacancy? Isn't that, or excuse me, occupancy?
That was not only 8%. Yeah, I mean, like Terry was talking about, you know, throwing 100% occupancy doesn't happen, you know, very often. And so the times where we're going to be reaching that maximum density is few and far between and, you know, we obviously, one of the things that we're always concerned about is guest satisfaction and that's our primary driver. And if you've got a guest that's upset because they can't park, it's not going to be less than good because they won't come back. And so, you know, we sit back and cognizantly think about that as well because we want to provide good guest satisfaction.
Paul, do you have in, in any kind of a scenario, you know, hypothetically, let's just say that you did find this a problem, anybody that you think you could, you know, lease parking space from and, you know, do some kind of employee shuttle or some option? You know, and I, I think that what I hear Kenny saying is, it's right, it's your, you know, you guys do this and you know, but having a backup plan.
Yeah, we've had the idea around a little bit, you know, especially with employee parking in general. If you're going to have, you know, eight to 10, 12 cars there on a big event with, with the hotel too, is talking to, you know, Colorado Tech, even to the strip mall that Brunz has and seeing if we can't do some arrangement on, you know, lease parking or something on certain events when we need to move those employees to free up spots.
Sure.
So that's something we've already thought about just because we want to make sure again that we're not upsetting that customer.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, Paul, Terry, if you're coming back for a final development plan, we'll also get to see how the grade issues potentially affect not only your building, your parking as well. So I'd be anxious to see how that all works out.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item 32? If not, is there commission action?
I will move for approval.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would like to bring out that I sometimes have a concern on these if the rules state a certain thing as far as parking spaces, that everybody kind of has that level playing field. I think there is some challenges to this site that is necessitating them to come back and saying, look, because of this, this, and that, I'd like to reduce it. I wouldn't want the general public to think, hey, let's build a motel and we can come back here and get smaller parking lots all the time. And I want to be sure in our mind that we're sure that there's a condition for allowing that reduction. And I think in my mind, the particular site kind of makes me feel comfortable. Somebody were to say, well, gosh, you allowed it here, why can't I have it? That's, that's my thinking on, on this particular issue.
I know what you're saying, Kenny. We oftentimes talk about, you know, where we're setting precedents and what I, and maybe at some point, staff can articulate to us some of the criteria that they use for, you know, saying, we've taken these things into consideration and, and we're comfortable. Because I think, you know, in our own mind, we all kind of do our own little well, well, well. But yeah, I, I hear what you're saying and it would be, it would be good to kind of understand so that not every applicant knows that it'll come through this way.
And so I think to help staff because I, I'm sure somebody come in and say, wait a minute, you just approved it for these guys, why not me? Thank you for the comment, Anita. I appreciate that.
You're welcome, Kenny.
All right. Item 32. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item 32 is approved. Item 33, design review in the 49th Street Design Review District for the installation of a new telecommunications facility at 4,000 West 49th Street. And that item has been deferred by the applicant until next month. Item 34, design review in the I-229 Design Review District for required screening at a motor vehicle repair business at 4060 South Grange Avenue. Staff report.
Again, this is for the conditional use permit that we previously approved for the location of the motor vehicle repair business for Vern ID Motor Cars in the existing facilities along I-229. There is existing landscaping there, there is existing parking improvements. The building is proposed to be modified somewhat with some new overhead doors and some new signage. However, everything else is, stays pretty much the same except for that loading dock area where they are going to add the screening. Now, the design review district requirement for the screening indicates that where topography will not provide for screening by a fence wall or berm, groupings of conifers shall be used to provide year-round screening. And that applicant is provo, is proposing to provide outdoor storage of motor vehicles and parts on the west side of the building at the existing loading area and is providing or is proposing a six-foot-high fence on top of the existing retaining walls along the north and south sides of the proposed storage area, but the fence design and materials are not indicated and the west side of the storage area is left unscreened. Staff is comfortable with the reuse of the property and the, the proposed approach to redeveloping the property as long as the storage area is screened by means of an opaque wood fence, masonry wall, or landscape berms, subject to approval by the planning director and so recommends. With the revised plan to indicate that and also that existing parking lot facilities shall not be used for unscreened storage of inoperable vehicles or, or parts. Sensing that there may be some times when overflow or additional capacity for storage of vehicles is required, the applicant is going to have to figure out a way to do that either with additional screening or accommodate the inside of the building for those uses. But we'd like to see that as a stipulation. We understand that Vern ID Motor Cars runs, runs a good business and we don't expect any problems. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. The applicant, please?
Paul Reynolds, 6809 South Minnesota Avenue. As far as the screening, the one, the one thing that Mr. Randall mentioned is as far as overflow, that is going to be something that they are going to have to accommodate with in the future. But they do have 14 stalls on the inside of the building right now for vehicle repair, which is going to give them plenty of space as their business gets going down at this location as far as inside storage. Again, as they deal with it on a daily basis, as the vehicles come in, their long-term intent is basically to either put those vehicles inside or get them within the screened area if they are going to be outside over a period of time, say over a 24-hour period.
Questions for Paul? Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on item 34? If not, is there commission action?
I'll move for approval of item 34 with the two stipulations.
I second.
There's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item 34 is approved with two stipulations. Item 35 is adjournment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Jeff, I don't want to sit by Meredith anymore. I'm moving down on the end with a nap.
Sit by me, Kenny.
He's just not that much fun. He's very argumentative.
Would you like to come over on this side?
That is a very vicious bunch of people.
But I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the ladies first before I make.